Call to order, and welcome to those who might be joining us the first time. Or the... Let me think about it, for the August meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Gulf Shores. Can I be heard? Can you hear me, you ladies? Bill will give us a roll call.
Robert Steiskel.
Here.
Dean Long.
Here.
Frank Mullin.
Here.
Philip Harris. Matt Young.
Here.
Jennifer Guthrie.
Here.
Pete Pekakis. Fallon Young. Billy Eubank.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. First order of business, as is typically the case, is consideration and approval of the minutes from the meeting last month. If there aren't any changes or additions, someone offer a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the July 27, 2021 Planning Commission minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
I'm staying, Mel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Minutes for deferral, there are none. So moving into public hearings, we have one. Doesn't appear to be much of a big deal. Who are we going to work over? Mr. Bauer. Lot C1, rezone request.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Planning Commission. This is a zoning request. The applicant seeks to rezon a 1.99 acre parcel to general business. Property is located at the corner of North Shore Street and Landward Drive, and is currently zoned R1-4, single-family residential. Got a couple of location maps on your screen. The map on the left, the subject property is shown by a red star. It's located in the northwest quadrant of the city, a little bit north of West 36th Avenue. The map on the right shows the specific location of the parcel. It's outlined and highlighted with the label designated with site. As you can tell from this map, on the... All of the red areas to the east of the property are commercial zoning, which is BA-zoned property. Also to the north is BA-zoned property. To the west is a portion of Aventura PUD, which has an underlying zoning of R1-4, single-family residential. There's also a small, small portion of the Highlands subdivision, single-family subdivision, which abuts this property to the west. And then south of the property is unzoned Ballin County property. And further south is also BA zoning. Some of the surrounding land uses, to the north is the Gulf Shores landfill. East of the property is primarily offices and contractor storage type uses. One of them is the Thomason Storage Unit, which also abuts Highway 59. And then you've got the North Shore Center Commercial Development, which contains offices. Again, some laundry-type uses, some lawn care contractor businesses and things of that nature. To the south of the property, the uses, even though it's unzoned by Ballin County, it's similar uses as, as is the zoned areas of the city. There's a, I believe it's a storage building for Ike's Beach Service located in that area, and then a couple of other commercial properties. And then again, to the west, you've got the single-family residential in the Highlands subdivision. And the portion of Aventura that abuts this property is common open space. Existing site conditions, got several photographs here of the subject property. The property is currently vacant wooded state. The top left-hand corner photograph is taken looking to the... From the intersection of North Shore Street and Landward Drive, looking westward. The top right photograph is taken from Landward Drive, looking to the east. The subject property is on the right of the screen. In the distance, you can see a kind of a warehouse. That is a warehouse associated with Gulf Shores Power Sports. The bottom-left photograph is taken from North Shore Street, looking directly west into the property. And then the bottom-right photograph is taken from North Shore Street, looking northward. The subject property is to the left, and you can see the Gulf Shores landfill in the distance at the end of North Shore Street. Here is the lot layout. Again, it's a 1.99 acre parcel. It's approximately 300 feet by 290 feet. And this just shows a lot layout as it is situated with the existing lots in this area of the city. Little background on this proposed property. Originally, it was part of the Aventura PUD. Aventura PUD was, is a master planned community, made up of a 404-lot, single-family subdivision. Aventura has gone through several PUD amendments. In May of 2018, Aventura was amended. The amendment revised the approved phasing plan in order to change the number of lots being developed within phases 1, 2, and 3. The overall number of lots did not change with that amendment. They just simply added some lots and reduced some lots from each phase. It was, Aventura PUD was again modified in February of 2020. This PUD amendment modified the number of lots in phases 2 and 3, and the lot sizes increased the amount of open space. It realigned the roadway connection to Landward Drive. Again, the number of lots within Aventura remained the same at 404 lots. At this point in time, the applicant requested to change the subject property to a commercial lot. Staff recommended they rezon the property, and they never went forward with it back in 2020. And they are now moving forward with that rezoning application, and that is the subject application before you today. And then finally, very recently, earlier this month, staff administratively approved a PUD amendment to remove the subject property from the Aventura PUD. So it's now zoned R1-4, single-family residential. The next several slides will hopefully visually depict some of that history and clearly show you what has happened since the February 24, 2020, PUD amendment. So this slide shows the overall Aventura PUD with the layout of the lots and roadways. The subject property is shown in the bottom right-hand screen, highlighted in yellow. When we zoom in on this property, again, one of the changes that was approved with the February 24, 2020 amendment was a relocation, and they modified the connection of this Aventura PUD to North Shore Street via Landward Drive. Previously, in the previous PUD master plan, there were some lots located on the north side of North Shore... I'm sorry, Landward Drive. So with this amendment, they removed those single-family lots. And another thing that this accomplished was the subject property previously was either part of some of those lots or designated open space. And with the PUD amendment, the applicant did not, did not provide a land use classification for this property. So it was just, it wasn't classified as single-family, single-family use. It was not classified as common space. It didn't, did not have a classification with the Aventura PUD master plan. The slide shows the, again, the subject lot in white. The red outline shows the location of the lot within the Aventura PUD, and as it relates to the surrounding properties. Again, the subject property is just highlighted in yellow, so you have a clearer depiction of the lot. So again, recently, city staff administratively approved a PUD amendment to remove this lot from the Aventura PUD. Article 15-6H of the zoning ordinance allows the zoning administrator to administratively approve minor boundary adjustments to a PUD that doesn't increase density or decrease the open space. So because this lot did not have a land use classification, neither of those criteria or the density wasn't increased, or the open space was not decreased, so city staff, or specifically the zoning administrator, could review and approve that minor amendment to the PUD. So again, the existing zoning of the property is R1-4. R1-4, as all of you know, is a single-family zoning district, which allows single-family houses and any accessory uses for those single-family houses. There's the subject property highlighted in blue. The proposed zoning is to rezon this property from R1-4 to BG, general business. General business is a business zoning category, which allows such uses as offices, and specified retail uses, and general service uses to serve the surrounding neighborhoods. Again, you can see on this slide that the, it's really a clear picture of the surrounding zoning. To the north and to the east is all commercial. To the south is either occupied by commercial uses or zone commercial. And then to the west is primarily single-family residential. So this property really serves as a transition area between the commercial zoning to the east and the residential zoning to the west. And there's the subject property highlighted in blue. Future land use plan indicates that this property is classified as medium-density residential. Medium-density residential uses are characterized by apartments, condominiums, townhouses, and single-family detached duplex housing on smaller lots. We've performed several analysis on this rezoning request. One of them is lot location and context. We've also reviewed the existing zoning versus, or proposed zoning, and the future land use plan. Again, the lot is located at the corner of North Shore Street and Landward Drive. This property serves as a transition area between the residential zoning uses to the west and the commercial uses to the east. North Shore Center is a commercial corridor, serving the commercial uses within the North Shore Center. All of the properties abutting North Shore Street are either developed or zoned with commercial, for commercial uses. And rezoning Lot C1 to BG will provide a continuity of the existing commercial uses and ensure a consistent development pattern along North Shore Street. Here's a couple photographs showing the existing uses. The top-left corner is taken from the, or looking to the northeast from this subject property. That is the Gulf Shores Power Sports and the warehousing associated with their uses. The top right is the Gulf Shores landfill located north of the, of the subject property. The bottom-left shows a commercial use as you, it's kind of to the southeast along North Shore Street, on the east side of North Shore Street as, from this property. And then the bottom-right photograph shows Ike's Beach Services development, which is, there's a vacant property directly south of this property, which is owned by Ike and used for some kind of off-site parking. And then you have Ike's developed property, which is a warehouse for his beach service uses. The proposed zoning, again, the proposed zoning is general business. General business is intended to provide locations for a specified range of retail businesses and services, offices, and other compatible uses serving community needs. One requirement of BG in the zoning district is an attractive appearance of buildings and their premises is important to the successful conduct of business for those BG-zoned properties. Again, most of the surrounding zoning is BA arterial business. Arterial business is intended to provide locations for a variety of commercial and light industrial activities along main highways and other locations where similar development may occur. BA is the most intense commercial zoning district. So in addition to a lot of the service, service uses allowed that are also allowed in the BG district, BA also allows several semi and light industrial uses. That's kind of the primary difference between BG zoning and BA zoning. We did compare BA and BG. Again, because of some of the uses that are allowed by right in the BA zoning district, we did not think that BA zoning was appropriate for this property. We felt like BG was a more appropriate zoning district for the proposal. Article 3-6 of the zoning ordinance allows the city to conditionally zone properties. What that means is the city, Planning Commission and City Council can place additional restrictions, requirements on a rezoning request based on the location and site-specific requirements. So we did review the area and dimensional requirements and use restriction or use regulations of the BG zoning district. And we believe one condition should be added to any approval of this rezoning request, and that is to limit the building height to five stories. So the reason for the request, or the condition, is the BA zoning to the east allows a maximum building height of eight stories. And the, our single-family zoning to the west of this property allows a maximum building height of three stories. So the five-story restriction will be a nice transition from eight stories to five stories to three stories. Future land use plan does promotes a policy of promoting infill development. Reads, "The city shall plan for and promote development and redevelopment of undeveloped or underdeveloped properties in developed areas of Gulf Shores in order to capitalize on existing infrastructure and services." By rezoning this property to BG, it may be developed with a use that provides a needed service to this area of the city and endorses a policy of the future land use plan. And with that staff recommendation, the proposed BG zoning serves as a transition between the mixture of uses surrounding this property. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the rezoning request to rezon Lot C1 from R1-4 to general business with the following conditions. Number one, we have made a couple, or this has been, we've changed this slightly from what is in your staff report. We just adjusted some of the wording. In an effort to keep the future land use plan updated, the plan should be reviewed, refined, detailed, and revised on a regular basis through preparation and adoption of plan amendments. Given the commercial zoning and development pattern in the area, the planning department recommends a future land use plan be reviewed by staff, and a recommendation provided to the Planning Commission to update the future land use plan within this area of the city accordingly. And number two, limit the building height to five stories. And we did publicly advertise this rezoning request. I've talked to two adjacent landowners on the phone. I spoke with the owner of Thomason Storage. He had a question about the exact location of the property. He didn't really give me any information if he was in favor of the request or against the request. I also spoke to Mr. Gary Ellis, who owns the property to the east, which is the North Shore Center development. Mr. Ellis was in favor of the rezoning request. He did have some questions and comments about the building architecture. And basically, he was wondering if the building architect, building architecture would mimic some of the existing buildings in his development. And actually, because his buildings are zoned BA, the BG zoning district has a little bit stricter architectural requirements as it relates to non-metal facades and siding for the building. So I relayed that information to Mr. Ellis. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we know of an intended use?
I did ask the applicant that exact question, and they do not have an intent, an intended use for the property at this point.
Anybody else up here have a question for staff? Let's see if there's anyone in the public this afternoon who has any questions. Or if the applicant or representative wants to approach this body, let us know. I can't hear what you're saying, ma'am.
I'm here as the applicant, but I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. No one else? Well, let's close the hearing. I didn't expect anyone. What's your pleasure?
And just to clarify, for the Planning Commission and the public that are in the audience or watching, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council. This will have to be reviewed by the City Council at a future meeting regardless of the recommendation.
Right. Somebody offer a motion? Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council, ZA 21000054. Lot C1 property rezoned. Second.
There's a motion and a second for rezoning, or in favor of rezoning. Any other comment or question? And if not, all in favor say yea.
Yea.
Seems unanimous, Mel. We have one site plan this afternoon. Highlighted as Bruce's Plumbing.
That's, that's correct. Good afternoon, Commission. Have a site plan application for Bruce's Plumbing. The applicant requests to construct a 5,000-square-foot commercial building on the lot directly south of 7369 Alamo Circle. The subject lot is .81 acres and is zoned general business. All right, your location map. You can see that the property is located on our northern boundary. And our little red star wouldn't even fit on the map. And the subject property is outlined in yellow, and again, you can see it's south of three, of 7369 Alamo Circle. Existing conditions of the property. So the subject lot contains the stormwater management area for the development to the north. There are two protected trees along the southern property line, and five-foot sidewalks have been installed along Alamo Circle. The surrounding context of the subject property. The property is surrounded by general business zoning. Again, you have the Gulf Coast chiropractic and Gulf Shores CrossFit to the north. Wetlands are located to the south, and vacant properties to your east and west. This is a pieced-together panoramic photo of the site, which gives you an idea of what the development looks like to the north. A little background history on the property. In 2015, the Gym and Wellness Center was, development was constructed on Lots 7 and 9, which is the subject lot. The building and the parking were constructed on Lot 7 with a portion of the drainage placed on the subject lot. In 2017, the city legislatively annexed the property in, into the city limits, and based on the underlying county zoning, which was B3, the property was zoned general business in the city. And in 2020, the applicant acquired the subject lot. This is a rendering of the proposed site plan. This rendering shows the 5,000-square-foot building, which is to be a plumbing contractor use. The building height is one story. Building coverage is 14.2% with a maximum allowing 65%. Impervious coverage proposed is 30.6. The maximum allowed is 85%. The setbacks are per the recorded plat, which is a 25-foot front setback, and zero on the sides and rear. The building clearly meets those setbacks. Landscape area provided is 55% with a minimum of 20% required in this zoning district. And the site plan is providing 10 parking spaces. The future land use plan designates the site as medium-density residential. Obviously, the proposed use of plumbing contractor does not comply with that designation. So the future land use plan will need to be reviewed by staff, and a recommendation provided to you to update the plan with this area, within this area of the city accordingly. BG provides, or general business provides for a specific range of retail businesses, services, offices, hotels, motels, and other compatible uses, serving the community needs. And a plumbing contractor use is allowed by right within the general business zoning district. All right, just a few points of planned review. The access provided is one vehicular access from Alamo Circle. And a internal sidewalk is connecting to the existing five-foot sidewalk along Alamo Circle. You can see the sidewalk there, proposed in the brown color. 10 parking spaces were provided based on the gross floor area of the building. The drive aisle parking, parking spaces were designed in accordance to Article 14 of the zoning ordinance. And wheel stops are proposed to protect from vehicle overhang onto the sidewalk and encroachment into the landscape along the southern parking spaces. The building architecture proposes a one-story building that contains 900 square feet of office space and 4,100 square feet of warehouse space for the plumbing contractor. A neutral-colored vinyl lap, lap siding is proposed, and the architecture complies with the building material regulations for the general business zoning district. Our tree protection plan shows a 20-inch oak tree to be preserved and a 15-inch oak tree to be removed. The total number of 3-inch caliper trees being planted will offset the total caliber inches lost from removing the protected tree. The landscape plan shall be revised to show the required parking lot, landscape island between the parking row and dumpster enclosure, including the required tree planting. So you can see in the smaller site plan, you can see where the civil plan shows that parking, parking lot island in the landscape plan does not show the parking lot island, so it just needs to be updated and the required tree placed within that parking lot island. Drainage. The drainage design proposes to utilize the existing stormwater pond along the The drainage design proposes to utilize the existing stormwater pond along the north side of the proposed drive, and the applicant has provided an additional stormwater pond along the southern property line. Now, maintenance of the existing pond, and obviously, the new pond, will be the responsibility of the property owner. In purchasing the lot, the applicant took possession of the appurtenances found on the property, including the existing and functioning drainage pond. Exterior lighting complies with the zoning ordinance with full cutoff fixtures to be mounted at 20 feet. Trash collection is to be, they're going to use a dumpster located along the southern portion of the site. An enclosure detail shall be provided by the applicant to verify compliance with the screening regulations of the zoning ordinance. The fire marshal has provided a phased approval of the site plan, and the engineering department have, has revised and approved the site plan, along with the storm drainage analysis and storm water management design report. Staff recommends approval of Bruce's Plumbing Site Plan with the following conditions. The landscape base plan shall be revised to match the civil base plan, showing the required parking lot landscape island, and required tree planting between the parking row and proposed dumpster location prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number two, the dumpster enclosure detail shall be provided to verify compliance with the screening regulations of the zoning ordinance prior to the issuance of a building permit. And the last condition, the future land use plan shall be reviewed by staff, and a recommendation provided to the Planning Commission to update the future land use plan within this area of the city accordingly. Have any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer, just verifying the parking spots, does this include their commercial vehicles along with any customers? I know you said it's based on the square footage, but...
Yeah, their commercial vehicles are going to be stored inside the warehouse portion of the building.
Thank you.
I don't see any problem with this. Unless someone has reservations, make us aware of it, otherwise, give us a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bruce's Plumbing Site Plan, ZA 21-000048, with staff conditions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed? Bella was unanimous. Is there anyone here in the public who, because they need to address this board, did not have an opportunity to get on our agenda? Very good. Other business? Are you guys going to bring up the land use plan revision? Planned revision that we're going to have to get involved in?
Revisions, yeah, we're tracking all of the revisions. It's been interesting here lately. Usually, the proposals fall in line with the land use plan, but lately, we've had a lot of need for revisions that there are areas in the city where we've seen...
Really unusual.
Yeah, that are zoned in a way that's not in compliance with the land use plan. So we're packaging all those together, and we'll come in December at the December meeting, and we'll analyze all of those before the December meeting and provide a recommendation on changes to the land use plan. And that is your, that's your plan to oversee and as a guide. So you'll either follow our recommendation or make other necessary changes, and then adopt it, adopt those changes into the plan, and we'll just maintain it that way mutually.
From that, we can move to communications from staff and/or the Planning Commission, and I think you pretty well covered where, which direction, how are we on our other item that we have considered using the conference room next door and so forth?
I talked to Donald Stewart this afternoon, and I'm giving him a list of our typical communication, things that we have communicated about over the past 12 months. And he's going to look at it to see if it's better for executive session conversations or just part of our journey to the meeting and having staff communication happen at the meeting. Still getting some feedback from the City Attorney on that.
Very good. I know you and I spoke about it a couple of times. I knew you were on top of it. Anybody up here have something for staff? Well, folks, that's about it. Somebody can offer an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dramatic.
Very gay.
Very dramatic.